Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to April's committee meeting for Shelby County Board of Education. We will go ahead and get started with academic performance. 2.01 is district level metrics. And so what we just wanted to do here is return to presenting to the board and the general public about where we stand in various areas. And so I want to just remind everyone of what our priorities are. And priority one being improving academic growth, achievement, and literacy levels. Priority two is recruiting increased retention of most effective non-charter leaders and teachers in the nation for our students. And then priority three being preparing students for the global workforce through rigorous coursework and certifications in supportive, high-quality facilities and learning environment. So that's what each of these elements are attached to. On the first page, you will see, or first slide, you will see metrics for K-12. So that's for overall measures. Looking at teacher vacancies, we just thought it was important to take a look at where we were pre-COVID in 2018, 2019, and then the most recent full year of data being 2022, 23. And then certainly, as superintendent, starting on April 1, we wanted to have some baseline data for what our measurements and success or effectiveness would look like from a specific point of time. And so we're using April 1 for that. And you can see that we have about 617 vacancies. That's about 10 and 1/2% of spaces or vacancies that we need to fill. When we take a look at unlicensed teachers, it's about 17%. And so that's some of our proximity learning courses. And we're thinking about that as we ramp up our recruitment efforts and do a better job about being sure that we ensure that instructional leaders are certified in all of our classrooms. When we take a look at current enrollment, it's about 105, just a little over 105,000. This does not include pre-K. And so there are certainly a couple more thousand there, but 105,071 students, current enrollment. When we take a look at the attendance rate, as it is usually communicated, is just how many students attend. I like to look at it the opposite way. And so this is the percentage of students that we need to find out how we do a better job of getting them back into our schools. And so our attendance rate is about 8.3% of students are not attending across all schools. And when we take a look at non-charter schools, it's about 8 and 1/2%. And when we look at charter schools, we're looking at about 7.6%. Our truancy rate for all schools is about 40%, about 38 and 1/2% for non-charter schools, and then 47.3% for our charter schools. We look at chronically absent rate. I just want to be sure that everyone understands that this is the number of students who have missed 10% or more of school days for any reason, and they've been enrolled for 50% or more throughout the school year. And so there's a bit of nuance when we think about what chronically absenteeism, what it consists of. And so we're looking at 47.3% across the district. For our non-charter schools, it's about 28 and 1/2%. And then just about the same for charter schools, just a little lower, about 26%. Across our grade bands, looking at K-5 first, taking a look at current enrollment, we're at about 51,000, nearing 52,000 students in K through 5. The number of students or percentage of students who have been absent is about nearly 8% across the board, all schools, non-charter and charter schools. We look at our truancy rate, a bit of a difference here. When we look at all schools, it's 38.3%. We look at non-charter schools, it's about 36.7%. And then our charter schools, a bit higher in terms of truancy rate at 46.2%. So a little work to do as we think about strengthening collaboration with our charter friends. The chronically absenteeism, or chronic absenteeism rate for grades K through 5, we're looking at 27% for all schools and 27% for non-charter schools, and then just a little lower for charter schools, about 26.5%, but in and around the same. As we shift into testing and what that is looking like, we didn't have pre-COVID data, but our most recent data for 2022, 23, is about 84% of students were not, or about 78 and 1/2% of students were below the 65th percentile in ELA, and we're at about 78% as of April 1. I-ready winter math, those performing below the 65th percentiles, about 83% of non-charter schools. And then overall, we're looking at, we didn't do overall here. So just looking at non-charter schools for these particular metrics. We look at our WIDA scores and access for our emerging multilingual bilingual students. We don't have baseline data for that as of April 1, but looking at our most recent data of last year, in comparison to pre-COVID rates, you can just see a slight difference, not much. The same for T cap achievement for grades 3 through 5 and ELA, as well as 3 through 5 math, a major difference there at 78.9% last year of students who were missing the bar there. And then certainly the same for science. We look at our grade bands, 6 through 8. Current enrollment, just a slight increase baseline of April 1, 23,388 compared to 23,316 just overall last year. So a little bit of growth there, but pre-COVID at 23,612. So we still have a few students to gain as we think about our recruitment efforts and enrollment across the board, but certainly in our middle grades, we're losing a few students there. Looking at the attendance rate, again, this is the percentage of students who we are missing, who are not attending schools. And so close to 8% across the board, all schools and non-charter schools, and then just at 7%, just below for charter schools, the number, percentage of students who are absent. Looking at truancy rate for our middle grades, just a slight decrease, if you will, from previous year, 37.9% as of April 1, where you can see we were at 43% for the full year last year. So we're already trending a little better. Looking at pre-COVID, 33.9%. So still quite a gap there to return, and certainly as we think about strengthening our efforts as it concerns truancy. Looking at chronically absent rate, 25% almost for all schools. As we look at pre-COVID rate and looking at the difference there, we do understand that across the board for, across the United States, for sure, this is an area that attention has to be given to. So we are not an anomaly, while we also own that we have some work to do in this area, for sure. Looking at non-charter schools, about 25% of students are chronically absent, and about 23% of charter students have been absent as well. Remember, this is missing at least that 10% of the school year and the enrollment of at least 50% of the year. I-ready winter ELA, about 77% of students, no pre-COVID data, but you can take a look at where we were at the conclusion of the year for 22, 23, and see the difference there. 81.5% for I-ready winter math for our middle grades. And so this is the number of students that we have a lot of work to do in order to shore up some skills, in order to see our students perform in the way that we know they can perform. Looking at PSAT 8, evidence-based reading and writing. And so there's a benchmark score of about 390 that you want to look at to determine if students are trending towards being college-ready as they are in this particular grade level. And so you can see that about 75.6% of students are not. Remember, we like to communicate the data in a way that shares the number of students or percentage of students that we have great work to do. And so this is the percentage of students who did not meet the mark, the bar, if you will, of that 390 in evidence-based reading or writing. When we look at PSAT 8 math, that bar is 430, a score of 430 and above. And you can see just over 89% of students have not met that bar. So we do have a lot of work to do as it concerns reading and writing, for sure, in our middle grades, and certainly math. But if you think about it across the board, there's just great work to do in our core courses to really demonstrate the level of learning and the type of experience that we want all of our students to have. Looking at grades 9 through 12, our high school students' current enrollment hovering around 29,766. So you do see a bit of an increase across the board, even pre-COVID. So we are hanging on to, if you will, for lack of better words, our high school students. And so I would attribute that to the emphasis being placed on establishing and enhancing the culture in our buildings, also ensuring that we have the right leaders at the helm, and certainly just a concerted effort to think about how we are finishing out the secondary experience of our students. Truancy rate is about 44.4% of our students are recognized as being truant. You can look at the comparison here, certainly pre-COVID hovering just a little closer or a little lower than that, which is where we'd like to be, but certainly 44.4% is just incredibly too high. 42.9% of non-charter students, and then we have 53% as we look at charter schools. And so our greatest efforts need to be here as we think about the number of students who are experiencing consecutive absences, which leads to truancy. Chronically absence rate, 32.5%, so slightly higher across all schools at that baseline of April 1, just hovering slightly close to where we ended 2022, 23-year. At non-charter schools, 33%, kind of hovering around the same bar, slightly lower pre-COVID for non-charter schools. And then charter schools, just an uptick from pre-COVID, but certainly lower in charter schools in terms of the chronically absence rate as compared to the most recent year, 2022, 23. Graduation rate, not available just yet, for sure, this year. 18.5% of students did not graduate last year as compared to that 20.7% who did not graduate pre-COVID. And so trending forward and upward in that regard in terms of the number of students that we graduate. And we'll dig a little bit more as we move forward. And what we think about graduation rate, yes, the percentage of students that were graduating, but what does it look like to really place them on a path after graduation as we think about workforce development and shoring up the skills that are necessary to transition effectively to employment or to a college or university and so forth? The ready graduate rate, 87.4% of students have not met that. And again, that is a combination of things, and one of those being having met the bar of attaining an ACT score greater than 21. And so I think you can see we have a lot of work to do there as well as we think about the emphasis that is placed on the ACT by the state, and certainly how we need to do a better job of aligning our efforts to measure where students are before they take the ACT. And so we've had conversations about what that could look like as we think about aligning, not just curriculum and instruction, but certainly how do we assess in the short term and in the immediacy so that we can make some immediate adjustments in the classroom so that when students go and take the ACT that they are more prepared? And then finally, the final part of grades 9 through 12, we're just looking at PSAT, evidence-based reading and writing. And again, you know, those scores change by grade band. So you can see that it's slightly higher in terms of what is considered college and career-ready, meaning how you will fare or could we think you might fare based on how you score in these particular areas. It's 410, a score in evidence-based reading and writing. And you can see that 74% of our students have not met that bar as of yet. PSAT 9 math, our grade 9 students in math needed to meet at least the 450 score, and you can see nearly 89% of students have not met that bar. Moving on down to advanced placement enrollment, we're at about 89.9% of students who are enrolled in at least one AP course. You can see that is slightly lower than where we landed last year at 90.1%. And so we'll take a look at what that consists of. IB enrollment, International Baccalaureate Program, 98.6% enrollment there and 97.8% last year. So a slight uptick and increase in the number of students who are enrolled in IB courses. Dual enrollment, a slight down, a slight decrease for whatever reason that we haven't quite gotten into just yet, but a slight decrease at 89% as compared to 91.1% last year. And then local dual credit and statewide dual credit, looking at about 59% and 78%. And then certainly a decline in local dual and credit enrollment and statewide dual credit enrollment. And that just requires emphasizing to students the significance of enrolling and taking additional courses, but also making the general connection to what that could look like as they transition to the next level. I'll pause here and ask, are there any questions from board commissioners?
I just have one question. As we dive into, as we dive into chronic absenteeism, we know that it's a problem, and it's a problem that we've been addressing, but are there any new visions in terms of us? I'll stop right there.
Sure, sure. Great question. So what are we going to do about chronic absenteeism, right? And what are we going to do, more importantly, that we haven't really thought about yet? Or what have we done that's generally worked that we haven't given enough time to see it through, and we could actually see some results on the other side? So that's the conversations we've had. I think I've shared a general idea with the team. They've been working on what a rollout could look like for that. And so what that looks like is having more conversations with our parents early on about what chronic absenteeism means, for sure. Again, that is meeting that bar of having missed 10% or more of classes or school, but you have to have been enrolled at least 50% of the year. And so it's a both and in terms of how we get there. But that is honoring what it looks like that when you miss that first day, just how close you are to meeting that bar of being chronically absent, but also the distinct measure of truancy and what that looks like. And so unexcused absences and five-plus of them, you know, that's what we're talking about when we're thinking about truancy and those consecutive absences as well. And so making sure there's a clear understanding of the difference between the two, and that you could also be in the bar or in the percentage for both being one student. And so we have a few things that we're looking through and ironing out, and we'll bring that to the board as well to share.
I want to see the truancy rates broken down by middle school and elementary school and high school because it is known fact that the parents in elementary school bring the kids to school. I want to see chronic absenteeism rates. A student can miss a month worth of school and be in the hospital and still be chronically absent. That needs to be broken down.
So if I understand you correctly, Commissioner Love, you'd like to see the breakdown of the current rates that we have here by the number of students who have possibly been classified or identified as chronically absent and/or truant because they've had some extenuating circumstance and not just grouped into the general number. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay.
What are you going to do about the students that isn't involved in the, in the hospital or diabetes? Their parents just ain't taking them to school.
So then what you're asking, hey, there are students who really want to get to school, but they just don't have a way. And so as students and families have identified transportation being a barrier or just whatever it might be that is non-emergent, being they're not in the hospital or experience some level of illness, that requires the team to, A, we have to look at policy, and B, we have to take a look and make sure that the students who are experiencing some level of emergency are receiving the accommodations that they need, be that, you know, homebound or whatever the next course of action that could be implemented for them could be delivered. It's also doing a better job of collaborating with our community partners in terms of the resources that could be provided. And several partners have generally demonstrated their commitment to strengthening what they're offering and also meeting these core needs, as you're highlighting here, that are nuanced and they differ by school. And so as we have conversations with our family engagement specialists, our principals, our professional school counselors, who really have a deeper understanding of what that looks like in their building, then we'll be able to do a better job of meeting those particular needs by school.
Last question. When are you going to bring this item to the board? Because we know our communities. We can have input on our different communities. In the Raleigh community and the northern Shelby County schools, there isn't a bus ride. So the kids get kicked out of school and they don't have a way to school. They are in alternative school and they don't have a way to school. That jeopardizes our enrollment.
So if I understand your question correctly, in a specific space such as an alternative school where students generally may not have access to transportation, the question is, how do we plan to support those students as well?
The board knows their community. I recommend you get input before the plan is complete.
Oh, absolutely. So if that's your question, or if that's the inquiry, will the board be able to have an opportunity to contribute? Absolutely. So that what the team will do is bring forth what we've received, you know, from general audiences. Some of that has been communicated at the VIP tours. Some of that will be highlighted in the hopes and dreams surveys. Others of that in terms of information will be just given by principals and their staff. And then once we compile that information in a synthesized way, we can bring something forward in terms of a plan and then allow you to contribute based on what you know about your respective districts and communities. I think that's what you're asking, right? Perfect.
I have a question. When are we going to stop using growth? And when do we start back to using growth instead of pass fail? Because this district was making tremendous strides with growth. Now growth is out of the window. You have to pass it or fail it. In every test, you will have some people to pass and some to fail, but all students can grow. So we get no credit now for growth. The other thing that I have a concern, a strong concern with, is that are we certain that the curriculum that is serving the children of Shelby County schools is the curriculum over which they are tested? Are we, have we adopted the right amount and the correct numbers of resources? I know that when I was in this business, we always used the sources that made the tests, and we use their materials. But now we have all of these models and all of these different things that teachers are having to do. And I'm not sure that they are approaching the objective of teaching and learning. And the mastery is shown here. I see growth still, but the state has changed the game. Now it's about pass fail. And we're going to be in trouble, serious trouble, because we are not making that as much as we are making growth. And we are making, but I still think that we have an obligation to make sure that what we teach is tested.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I'll start with your second part, which, you know, you and I have had several conversations about the same, and teachers have lifted the same as well in their meetings with you and I present. And so there's a general understanding that we are looking at and have to look at what our curriculum states, how the instruction certainly aligns, or if there's a misalignment of the same. And then more importantly, what you're speaking to is, are we testing or are we teaching what is being tested? And so all valid questions in all areas that we are already leaning into, and look forward to sharing with you something more concrete. As I certainly agree that if there is any disconnect, and if there's any concerns from teachers that there is a disconnect, let me be more specific, then that is our responsibility to give that the due diligence and attention. And so that's what we're doing. We do have a couple of focus groups that are coming up with teachers who are really passionate about the same, where they have the opportunity to speak directly to this. They get to bring forth some tangible examples to me. I'll actually participate in them myself. They'll bring forth these examples where they see the disconnect. Some of that has been underscored as in math. Grade levels have been underscored particularly where they're seeing the disconnect in the general sequencing of how we are teaching. And some of that is internal barriers, if you allow me to continue to be transparent and honest about some things that we may have inflicted in terms of our expectations, directives, and otherwise measures of compliance. And so if we're allowed to just take a look at all of that on its face and really own that a better way forward is available, and we're doing that right now in tandem with, in collaboration with, and deep collaboration with our teachers. And so looking forward to sharing that with you as well. A lot of this will come in our transition report that we'll be able to share out, which will also be combined with a strategic plan and how we really focus the way forward. I think in terms of your first question about growth, you named it. The state has really placed us in a space where proficiency- The state has really placed us in a space where proficiency, proficiency, proficiency is all that really matters. How many students are on grade level, which is important. And so what I will add and, and underscore and will continue to emphasize, as you have shared, is a both and. There has to be a level of demonstrated growth in order for a student to, to demonstrate proficiency, especially the number of students who start off behind and below grade levels. They have to demonstrate a level of growth first before we will be able to see them demonstrate proficiency. We see that moving and, and being more extreme as we move across and up towards in our grade bands. And so it starts out in, you know, K-five, but then it significantly increases in terms of deficiencies as we get to middle grades. And so if we look at the enrollment and we look at all the metrics that we're sharing here and put a story together, we're missing a lot of our students in middle grades. And so we're missing them and they're visible and they are in attendance, which shows up in our grades nine through twelve, where we get students who are entering grade nine and they are three to four and might I add, five to six grade levels behind, meaning they haven't demonstrated much growth since they were in second or third grade. And so that's the real issue. Yes, we need to be looking at growth. We certainly know that proficiency matters, but we also have to take a look at where we're losing our students, at which grade levels, and really dig into the gaps there. And that speaks more to what you were sharing about the alignment and/or the misalignment that could be with our curriculum and instruction. Is that a fair response?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm curious. Thank you for this presentation of data and I think the opportunity we have in front of us. I, I expect that we'll have a thorough review of programs, initiatives and services that target each of these metrics, but I'm curious if there are any system level responses that are standing out as ones that you are exploring right now that would, you know, look at the root of how all these are connected, just in your community tours and talking, whether that is, you know, a partnership approach or anything that's on your mind.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Commissioner Hewitt Garcia. As we think about, you know, just what am I seeing right now, like how do, how does it look or how could it look to approach and address these gaps and how we will move forward? I think immediately for me, it is what you've mentioned about community partnerships. And so we've had a lot of conversations with, with partners who exist, those who want to return, they left for whatever reason, and then those who want to enhance what they currently offer by school for sure. And so what I've generally shared is that it is the goal to have at least one district or one partner for every school where that does not exist right now. But those who do exist already have demonstrated an appetite for strengthening what they're offering. I think the, the easiest way in terms of looking at this is if we can get students to the building, that's about eighty to ninety percent of the challenge, right? If we can get them to show up, we can take care of the business inside of the house, if you will. And so what students have shared is they want more programs, they want more courses, they want to have more activities in their building. That's from Cordova to East and everything in between and having these huddles and, and conversations with students. They've presented to me and asked some really hard questions and they're asking more of the same, like what do you plan to do about? And it is just that. And so students will be a part of the transition team for that very reason. And so they will play a part, a major role in contributing some of the plausible solutions and viable ways forward and how we really address this work. And so you will see me or you will at least hear that I've shared much of this same data with them because it's important for them to know why the narrative exists about them and our district, just as it is important for us. And so they will play a major role, looking at how policy impacts them as well. And so there's a lot of moving parts that we can get into immediately as we think about the larger issue of how we're actually, you know, measured, looking at the bottom twenty-five percent of students. I have had conversations immediately with those school principals who the state has designated the school as either a D or an F. And so what you'll see coming forth from me in the next week or so for you board members, board commissioners first, is what that particular structure could look like and will look like as we own the way forward. What I've shared with them in a transparent way is that the work has to turn quickly by the end of next year, moving at least one grade letter up. And so there are some streamlined ways that we will do that work. And so I think we can look forward to seeing a lot of these metrics improve, certainly in a term, in a space of growth for sure, as we think about what proficiency looks like as well in each area.
This is, this is just a comment. I think I've shared this in public meetings and certainly in my one-on-ones with the, our, our budget work, is that the fidelity of implementation and being able to ensure those services are getting to students. I would encourage us to go deep where we can. So if we gave all of those, you know, if we can't do it for one hundred and sixty buildings, what would it look like to, to have proof points to, to build that, you know, the public buy-in, increase the capacity to dedicate more resources to when done with, when people are doing what they're hired to do, what will it look like for kids? So I'd love to see us invest and think about that.
Absolutely.
Dr. Figgins, welcome to your first committee meeting. Glad to have you here. You're doing great. This is, this is important, right? Starting with data, so I appreciate that. You don't have to respond, just have three maybe suggestions as we move forward. One of them is, you know, looking at the, the obvious challenge of attendance and absenteeism and truancy, maybe on this, on these priorities, we want to refine the language where we specifically address that. Because I know we talk about improve academic growth achievement, maybe we just need to name the importance of attendance. So just food for thought. Because that is driving a lot. I mean, you said it, if students are not in the building, there are no learning, right? So, so I think we need to continue to make that a priority. The other two are, again, small suggestions. I noticed in some of the presentation, in some of the metrics, the description is not fully available, so it's after five, six pages, it's easy to get lost. As, as the media and other partners and other people look at this data that we specify, like what are we looking for? Like is this number of people not performing or performing? Do you follow me?
Being clear about what the metric is saying.
Exactly. And the third one is, you know, again, the data is amazing, but how do we keep, you know, something that, again, everybody can wrap around their head around and say, these are the five things that we have to go, right? Your team, of course, will look at these numbers every day, but for, for, for the rest of us, we know, this is, this is very concerning. Like this is really important and it's, it's sad to look at this, but we have to, if it's too much, people are going to throw their arms and say like, this is too much, we cannot do this work. And we absolutely can't. So, you know, as you think about a dashboard that is also available to all of us and to the public that, that we can, we can, data that we can all get our heads around it and say, every decision that we make has to help us move these, these numbers up.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Calvo, I think just to speak to your last comment there, so the, the point of these metrics for sure was to overwhelm the, the body, right? These are all the metrics that we are responsible for, for chasing, if you will, for, for tracking. These are all the different ways that our students are being judged, for lack of better words. And this is certainly more importantly, the way that we as a district are being judged. And so when we think about, as we make a budget presentation coming up, as we think about strategic priorities, which will be refined and fine tuned at the, the end of the one hundred day period, you will see this dwindle down and you will ultimately see how we arrived at those three, three things for sure, maybe five. I've shared generally that if we chase too many things, we won't get anything. And so it will be three for sure, maybe four to five, and you will begin to see it dwindle. But it is to overwhelm the system by being transparent, one, to share it all out, two, and to be very clear that we are owning this work that we are having to do as we think about all the many moving parts. Although they are presented individually, all of this is integrated and it all contributes to the well-being, if you will, of a student, but more importantly, what we're saying about what their future can hold. And so looking at WEDA scores for our emerging bilingual and multilingual students, looking at attendance for all students, thinking about truancy rates for sure, but more importantly, thinking about what we're saying to students with this data as we share it on its face, if you will, about what we have left to do. And so you will see this being refined for sure as we get our, our plan together for the next three to five years.
Hear me? Thank you. Can you explain the numerator and denominator for the, and why there's a variance between, if we're looking at attendance rate and when we're looking at truancy rates, why there's a reduction? And I'm just, I'm just looking for an explanation on why that's, that's the case. Would it help?
Sure, sure. Thank you for that question, Commissioner Woods. When we're looking at chronically absenteeism rates, remember these are the number of students who have been enrolled for at least fifty percent of the year. And so we have a general overall enrollment of about one hundred and five thousand, right? Which doesn't include, include pre-K. So we know that every student hasn't been here for at least half of the year. And so you'll see a distinction between those numbers. And that same exists for truancy rates as well, as we think about the number of students that are considered in the denominator.
So what percentage of attendance is true, defines truancy? Because again, just from the understanding, when I see all students at a hundred and fifteen thousand as the denominator and then under chronically absenteeism, the, the total is a hundred and five thousand. And this is on next level readiness metrics, K through twelve. Just looking at the variance in numbers between the number of students when you give me a percentage for truancy rate and then when you give me a percentage for chronically absenteeism, absentee rate. I'm sure there's a justification. I'm just looking to.
So the truancy rate specifically is the percentage of students who had ten-plus unexcused absences in a school year.
I understand that, but I'm, I'm asking about the denominator. Is that not all students? Like it's a hundred and fifteen thousand students. And then under absentee rate, it's a hundred and five thousand students.
Let me get to the slide real quick.
It's the first page of the presentation. And, and while I'm speaking to superintendent, someone knows the answer to move us along. Just please tell, tell us. I'm just looking to understand.
You're asking about the discrepancy between the twenty-nine thousand students?
I don't know if it's a discrepancy. Under truancy rate, it shows that there's a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and fifty students as the denominator, and it shows that we have a truancy rate of forty-six thousand. And when I look at chronically absentee rate, it says there's a hundred and five thousand as the denominator and a nineteen thousand students are chronically absent, which I get. I'm asking why there's a variance in the denominator.
So in the truancy rate, the one hundred and twelve thousand students for all schools includes non-charter and charter schools.
They both do.
Truancy rate, the chronic absenteeism rate, one hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seven. Remember those students, it's the number of students who enroll for at least half the school year. So we don't have the same number enrolled.
So, so, so again, not trying to challenge them, just want to understand. So you're saying that we have more students that's counted in the denominator for truancy than we do for absentee rate?
Correct. Because all students have not been enrolled for at least half the year.
Half the year.
Right.
That's the variance. Okay, got you. So therefore, when you, when you do a calculation of, of all the students who've been enrolled in half the year, we're at a total of a hundred and five students versus a hundred and fifteen students. And again, I'm looking at the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, just to pull you into where I'm at on, on the presentation.
Right, right. So looking at the twenty eighteen, nineteen year, the one hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and fifty for all schools, non-charter and charter, that would be the total number of students at that particular time of the year.
Okay.
And then in the chronic absenteeism rate, the one hundred and five, five hundred and seventy-eight is the total for non-charter and charter. That's the number of students at that particular year that have been enrolled at least half the year.
Okay. And so to Commissioner Calvo's point, and I think you get where we're going, like we could use that ledger, because as a board member, if I have trouble tracking, I'm not sure Joe Public does as well.
Sure.
So just having a better understanding.
Sure.
And then my follow-up question is, why the pullout? And we see it often as a board, but there has to be a rationale when we see the charter line versus non-charter line. What do you want the community and board members to understand from that? Obviously, we control our own destiny. And so I got a two-part question. One, why the pullout? And so to get clarity there. And then what's all included when you say non-charter? Because there are other schools that we may be getting credit for that we also aren't controlling their destiny, like campus school, like, you know, schools that we partner with universities on. Are they considered in the non-charter line or they're not included in the number at all? And again, just, just wanting to understand from the data people.
Will you ask the question one more time for?
I'll start with the last one first. In the non, in the non-charter school line, what are, are contract schools included in that number?
No, contract schools would not be included in.
Either number?
Correct, Bill?
Come on, Bill.
From my understanding of what you shared. Come on, we can speak.
This is, this is, this is what we learned.
Just trying to move along and answer the questions.
I'm, I'm sorry. The, the non-contract does include the, the contract schools that we have. So it's, it's.
Non-charter.
And non-contract.
They're in the non-charter school number.
Non-charter.
There's, there's the non-charter, which includes the contract, the district managed and the contract.
All right.
Campus, university, middle, university, high, Excel Center if it applied, but a lot of that's adult data, so it wouldn't apply in these metrics that you're seeing. And then it's going to be the charter, which is strictly charter.
Okay. Perfect. That's helpful. That's helpful. And so to my original question, what's the rationale of separating the two? What do you want us to know?
Well, I think, I think that.
Otherwise, I'll draw my own conclusion and say it out loud. And so tell me what you want me to know.
Well, I, I think when we look at these data, it's important to separate the two because of the autonomy that charter schools have. And so we typically try to do that. Plus, there's a different funding stream for the charter schools in terms of the way that the funding gets kind of passed through the district. So it's just, I think, a way to be able to look at the schools that the board and the administration have more direct control over versus the ones that have autonomy.
There's also testing requirements that charter schools do not have to, you know, they have an option. And so I think that's important when we think about academic performance and what we're sharing out. And so if you're not required and being held to the same bar, then, you know, it's important to be transparent in, in that data as well. And I think that's what you're really getting after. And I want to make sure that we're clear and the team will be clear, you know, as we communicate this forward, when we're making these distinctions, while we're making them. It is not to, to separate and certainly not to speak from a space of exclusion, because we're certainly intentional about collaborating, but there are just certain policies and measures that we don't control. And one of those is who gets to take which test, right? So that's part of it.
I don't disagree, and I'll conclude with that. I just think we need to just be not afraid to say it, right? We want to be able to differentiate that the challenges that we face as a district is no different than, than those who have autonomy and their, their numbers are just as, just as bad, right? And so don't be afraid to say that. And then two, I do think it's important that the board know, like when we're including or padding particularly our schools that also operate independently, like campus schools, just at least inform us of that. Because if they're in the number, I wouldn't naturally assume that they're in the number if, if you're telling me. So I think a ledger would be helpful when we talk about what's included there. Thank you though.
Urban area similar to Memphis and Detroit, what strategies have you used that have proven to be successful with increasing teaching and learning?
Specifically, just in general?
What you have, you know, what, what has been the best outcome for you from your vast experience in a similar district to improve and grow students?
I think it goes back to what I mentioned earlier, is working directly with the teachers, those who have been, you know, to school to do this work. It is including them in the conversations about, you know, the way forward. So when a teacher tells me that there's a great concern and several teachers share that, hey, our sequencing is off or, you know, we need to lean more into writing. I think that the Wonders curriculum does a great job in phonetics and phonemic awareness, but it doesn't have enough writing opportunities for our students. So when they show up and they take these exams and they have to do a lot of writing, we kind of suffer in that regard. I think the onus is mine and ours to listen to that and think about how we supplement, if you will, in terms of developing short cycle assessments. So in my previous experiences, that's one of the ways we've been, you know, most effective, is developing our own assessments internally about the way forward. And so that's just in departments. It's the old school way, for lack of better words, where those common assessments are developed, we're giving it on a certain cadence, we're having the conversations in department meetings, we're looking at student products in terms of their work, we're making immediate adjustments in the instruction and the, the scope and the sequence in the way forward in terms of the guide. And we're able to see, you know, the results and the fruits of our labor immediately. And we know or can greatly anticipate, if you will, how we think students are going to perform on these exams. And so it's not a lot to be left, you know, up to grabs to, to guess about if we really get into the work inside of our buildings and thinking about short cycle assessments and general intermediate ways to figure out where students are, meet them where they are with the resources and the tutoring and whatever needs to be provided during the school day, and certainly making sure that teachers have what they need to carry out the instruction. And so what teachers will share, at least the unions will share, the first question that I ask of them is, what can we do to take something off of your plate to ensure that I ask of them is, what can we do to take something off of your plate to ensure that the teaching that needs to take place can take place during the time that it needs to take place? And so there are many things done in my previous experience, and I think that we are doing in part in some pockets here that we need to scale across the board, across the district, that will lead us forward and upward. Is that fair?
Yes.
All right. Any additional questions about the district metrics? We knew this would be a fun one. Okay. We can move to 2.02, which is charter authorization, initial round.
Good afternoon, Board Commissioners. My name is Brittany Monda, Assistant Superintendent of Charter Schools, and I have our Landra Parker here with us this afternoon as well. During our authorization for this initial round, we have four schools that have applied to the district. And our recommendation, just to frame us for today, is that we recommend that the Shelby County Board of Education adopt the denial of the following charter applicants. And so as I said, we had four. We have Wooddale Middle School, which is an ASD transition school, Blueprint College and Career Prep, Journey Northeast Academy, and Grizzlies Prep STEAM School for Girls. As you all are aware, as a part of the Tennessee Public Charter Schools Act, it requires the local Board of Education to approve or deny a public charter school no later than 90 days after receipt of the completed application. That 90-day period ends April 30th, which is the date of the board business meeting. If there's no action taken either for approval or denial at that time, those applications are automatically approved. And so our goal is to provide you with all the information related to what our recommendations are for this initial round. Based off of Board Policy 1011 and the Tennessee Charter Application Rubric, for our four schools, our recommendation is denial. In order to be deemed eligible for approval by the state standards, the schools must meet or exceed each section of the application in order for the applicant to be approved. So we'll go through each of the rationales at a high level of why there is a denial for each of these. But the full list of rationales can be found in the supporting rubrics that we've provided. Once again, this is our initial round. And so if applications are denied at this time, applicants do have 30 days to review our feedback, remedy, make amendments, and submit an additional application to us for the second round of review, which will come forward in the July board series. First, we have Wooddale Middle School. As I said before, Wooddale Middle School is an ASD school that is transitioning or applying to transition from the ASD to Memphis-Shelby County schools. Their sponsor is Green Dot Public Schools Tennessee, with a 6th, 8th grade structure and a student capacity of 715 students in the Parkway Village neighborhood. Our rationale is to, excuse me, our recommendation is to deny with a rationale related to information needed about students with disabilities within their academic plan. There weren't any letters of support identified for the school from community businesses and partners as commitments to the school within that area. Goals for the school were limited and only went to 2025. And so we would like to see what the school plans to do in the next 10-year term if they were granted an application with the district. Additionally, Green Dot, or excuse me, Wooddale Middle is a part of Green Dot Tennessee, which is a part of a charter management organization. That charter management organization is a national organization that is based in California. And with that organization, they actually are dissolving at the end of June. So we do need more discussion and additional information related to what their board plans to do as a part of that transition, and how they are specifically going to look at their financials or financial expertise through that. Green Dot Public Schools Nationals has provided that support to Green Dot Tennessee, and we don't have any additional information of how that will remedy itself throughout this time. Additionally, related to finance, the contingency planning lacks detail, and there's funds listed that the school actually will not have available to them long-term, based on the designation of the school and based on the current ESSR sunset. Since this is an ASD application and the school is currently operating, the school and the overall network scores are linked to the past performance section. Across all of their schools within their network, their scores are inconsistent, and they do not show a set of high-performing schools as listed as a part of the Tennessee Application Rubric. Next slide, please. Go back one, please. Thank you. Next, we have Blueprint College and Career Prep. This is a 9th through 12th grade school, a high school, with a student capacity of 720 students in the Parkway Village area. Our recommendation is to deny, based on a series of rationale. This school is a new-start school, so it's not affiliated, you know, with a replication or anything. It is a new-start. Specifically, first, in that Parkway Village, Okeegavin community that the applicant has identified, the capacity of seats saturate the area that they're asking for, as there's no more seats, or excuse me, there's more seats than students. The academic focus and plan need additional development, as the school doesn't have a curricula chosen, they don't have a timeline to choose that curricula or set of resources. We don't know if that information will be aligned to Tennessee state standards. And then wrapped into that, related to RTI, Students with Disabilities EL Plans, there's critical components that are missing in order for that school to meet basic requirement, basic compliance requirements. Additionally, based off of the school's name, you can see that college and career is a focus for the school. With that focus, the college and career portions are underdeveloped, and there's more information needed about industry certifications, courses, and the overall execution of how those requirements will be met. From the operations perspective, the startup plan is incomplete. It's missing components of how it will build its structure to be a school, how professional development will happen, how staffing will occur, security, maintenance, some of those basic operational components. And then linked into operations obviously comes finance. The budget and the narratives that the school or the applicant has provided are misaligned across the application, and there's not contingency planning should enrollment not be met, or grant funds aren't reached during that time. Consistently across this application, there is an MSCS charter school that's referenced that is not in the same grade band. It's an elementary school that they may partner to work with, but the references in the application don't match the demographics that they're set out to actually serve. So in some sections, there's confusion, because it might be talking about early grades when they're actually proposing a high school. So our feedback, as included in the full rubric, identifies those pieces. But right now, the application is not ready, and with that, our recommendation is to deny. Next, we have Journey Northeast Academy. Journey Northeast is a part of Journey Community Schools, which is a K-H structure. They have a proposed capacity of 528 students in the Sycamore View neighborhood. This applicant is, one, we do have a, they are a current operator with us, and they'll open another school with us that transitioned from the ASD in the fall. And they do have obviously past performance, which at Journey East has relatively been strong, related to their status and T-VAS and achievement scores. When we're looking at this specific application for Journey Northeast, the applicant mentions a five-year academic plan as an extension of their current academic plan, but we do not have the details of what that looks like. And as you all know, the charters are granted for 10 years, and so we want to understand that scope as we look forward. Additionally, through an academic lens for special populations, we need additional information of how their support EL students and gifted students. There's a lack of community support of the organization with clear, with no clear actionable outreach plans as part of the application. And through academics, recruitment and enrollment lack relevant information to support the projections that they've included. The application doesn't have any evidence to support the data to show us what that need is or what that demand is within that area. From an operations lens, the school has not included a facility or a facility contingency, and it's unsure whether the proposed facility will actually meet its programming needs as it begins. There's staffing in key positions that are misaligned across the application, and we're unclear of how the centralized support services may support that one specific school. And then finally, for finance, as we said that there are additional schools, but the organization earned a, does not meet in financial performance on one network school, as there is two audit findings using network procedures, and that's specifically related to the TDOE application and application rubric. Lastly, we have Grizzlies Prep STEAM School for Girls. This is a 6th, 8th grade structure specifically for girls in the downtown area with a capacity of 525 students. Grizzlies Prep Charter School, Inc. also has Grizzlies Prep Boys School in downtown right now, and their goal is to have a sister school. While the applicant already has a school in that downtown area, there are some additional questions around the current school's application and enrollment planning, with only targeting four neighborhoods, and how this will support the overall need for the demographic of students representing at the all-girls school. From an academic perspective, you'll see that STEAM is obviously a component here, but there's additional information needed around the full rollout and to ensure that the program is comprehensive. So that includes curriculum, it includes the hiring of a STEAM director in year three, contracting out for STEAM electives, and then having the STEM designation from the TDOE in year seven. And so although the main purpose is STEAM for the students, understanding how that will be incorporated through all the years of its 10-year status. More clarity is also needed between the balance of the two schools. This will be an additional school to the structure, and we need to understand the expertise that will be pulled from the current school, shifted to the girls' school, and potentially used in both locations. The, it's evident by the staffing plans, the facilities plans, and the overall coordination of operations that there is additional information needed there. As related to facilities, just additional contingencies are needed there for the co-location of two schools. The school is looking for properties or has identified properties. However, it's unclear if those properties are still available at this time for actual use. The applicant did not include financial procedures, policy systems, and processes for accounting, payroll, and audits. And so we do need that information included as well. And their past performance in the application didn't speak to their most recent achievement data or discussion around their most recent achievement data. Overall, with this application, there's just misalignment and outdated information across the application that caused confusion of what was current or what was previously discussed, as they have applied with us before. And at one point last year, they did not submit an amended application with us. And so additional clarity is needed there. Thus, our recommendation is to deny for the initial round. As I stated before, the initial round is the round that we are in right now. If these applications are denied, all applicants would have the opportunity to submit an amended application to us based on the feedback that is given to them, which we send a full rubric, a follow-up of, you know, what information, excuse me, when information would need to be submitted, along with each section of the application, and where there is additional feedback needed, or maybe questions to clarify some of the information. The applicant would have 30 days to resubmit that, and we would plan then to bring it back to the board in July, should they submit an amended application with us. Ultimately, at the end, if they have a denial locally from the Shelby County Board of Education, they can appeal to the Tennessee Public Charter School Commission as well, should that be the case. But I want to reiterate that this is the initial round. You know, we, at least historically, within my time at the district and even being a school leader before, we have not seen an application approved in that initial round, because there are usually questions and further discussion that's needed about that. And we would provide all of that feedback to applicants to ensure they have that information. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Monda. Is it your professional opinion that the current rubric, as approved by this board, meets the needs that your office has to fairly and strategically evaluate the schools? Or is it your professional opinion that we should revise the policy?
So I think there's two questions, Commissioner Calvo, in your question. So the first is, the rubric that we're using is the Tennessee Department of Education's rubric. So in state board rule and TCA, we have to use the rubric that is put together. Actually, the application and rubric were updated from last year to this year for use by the TDOE with our input included in that, because to your point, there were some sections that we think could have been adjusted, and our feedback was taken into account as a part of that with one of the largest districts in the state. And then the second question related to our local board policy, it's kind of a hurdle in some sense. The application would need to meet the Tennessee Department of Education's rubric first, no matter what, before we could apply that policy, because within our policy, it states that they would meet the TDOE expectations. And so those denials that you see of saying the TDOE rubric and the Shelby County Board of Education policy, it's because they have not met the TDOE policy first, although there may be other factors. You know, we do plan to look at the policy and see if there's anything additional related to that. I would generally say that the rubric with the TDOE is fair of what it's asking. However, there's always room for improvement, and we always provide feedback to the TDOE of what we're seeing, because as times change, different types of programs apply to us. There sometimes are questions that don't align anymore, and so we're constantly seeking help or seeking opportunity to provide that feedback.
Because, I mean, to the extent that we're not making, I've been on this board where the rubric suggests one thing, but then the staff says, like, we do really need that school there, right? Or we don't. So I mean, I understand that we have to follow the law, but I keep asking the question of, are we making this harder than it needs to be? Or are we being strategic about this? Because, again, that was one example recently where the rubric said, this is a bad idea. But yet we know that people can go above us and get approved, or that we actually do want that people to be there, that particular school. So, I mean, so instead of playing, not that you are, but the body as a whole, playing politics, just like, let's just do the right thing. But I want to say that from my seat, I want to make sure that your office is supportive, that if we need to challenge the policy, we should.
I think that that's something that will be coming up here shortly, as we try to engage with Charter Partnership Council, and, you know, that can engage with discussions with the board and community members and leaders to talk through what that looks like. I also think that, you know, with our new-start charter applications, what's important to think about as well is, they are new. And I think with that, they're engaging in a new contract with the district. And so when we're looking at data across charter schools, which we just did in the review, you know, charter schools are to be that innovative programming that provide a different type of setting for students that, you know, might be accelerated or a different program path, different grade levels, you know what that looks like. That's something that's not necessarily captured in the rubric, but we try to capture that for the group, because there are innovative ideas that are out there. This one looks a little bit different, because we're engaging in a contract, and what they're writing in their application is what they're then promising to the community and district. And so we want to make sure that when we're engaging in feedback or approving applications or recommending to approve applications, that all of those components are there, so that we have a very clear picture of what they're setting out to do. Because we've seen, unfortunately, in cohort groups where we've had, you know, five schools approved within one set, and unfortunately, all of those schools are now closed due to one thing or another. You know, there's many components related to that. So we want to be very clear of what the TDOE expects, but also be very clear of what we expect as a local board, what you all expect of us. To your point, I think that there's room for discussion of what that looks like from a local level. But I think that this is one of our most important processes, because as we're adding new schools in, we want to set the level or the bar high, make sure that there's a high set of expectations, because we need to do better as a portfolio just generally. So if we're adding more schools, how are they going to make our portfolio better as well?
Dot is leaving the district? Or they'll be closing soon? Did you make that reference across the state, across the country, I guess?
So let me clarify my statement. So Green Dot Nationals is a national organization. They have schools across the nation in many different states. Green Dot Nationals is dissolving at the end of June. There are. There are other Green Dot schools in other states, including Green Dot Tennessee, that are taking on a local board so that they can continue to serve students. But the national organization that has provided oversight and financial support is dissolving at the end of this year, or, excuse me, the end of this fiscal year.
So they've made a whole lot of money. So what happens to Fairleigh this year? I know they're coming out of Green Dot because they're going away, and we are happy to have them back, but they're coming out in a much, coming, returning in a much worse shape than they left. So it's those kinds of things that bother me when we grant our privileges to charter schools to do what we are capable of doing, and obviously, we're doing a better job at, but they stay long enough to make a whole lot of money, but then they leave as they're doing there. So I wanted to be clear that you said that they were going out of business nationally, Green Dot.
The national organization is dissolving, yes.
My question, Ms. Munda, regarding, you mentioned about charter's application and the goal is to identify innovation. What's the internal process when we identify innovation, but either for financial reasons or oversaturation, like, there's not a need for a school there? Is there just a dumpster for great applications where there's no need? How do you infuse those ideas, those innovations into the system to, go back to Commissioner Williams' point, where those ideas are now a part of the fabric of the district?
So I think that's a great question. I think that's something that we're continuing to improve upon. That was also part of the feedback that we received from the Tennessee State Board of, "What does this look like as we move forward as an exemplary authorizer?" I think that two things, or twofold. The first is, as we get to application season, which is basically a year that we're working on this, so beginning in that October-November period, right when this ends, we can do a request for proposal if we see a need as a district of some sort of identified, whether it be model, grade level, area, something like that, which can come from the Charter Partnership Council and discussions based off of what was included in Board Policy 1011. So I do think that there's an opportunity there. As far as, you know, a file folder that just has great ideas sitting in it, we don't necessarily have that, but do want to engage in conversations with leaders as they're thinking about opening schools, of where they could be, what model they could be. And then even past that, for schools who may have delayed or, you know, are working through a pre-opening phase, identifying strong points of the application, but also points that might need to be adjusted so that we can serve, you know, an area or a population better from gaps that we're seeing.
Thank you for that. So I appreciate that. So it sounds like it's an opportunity, particularly when we're doing application reviews. So here's my question, I guess, for Superintendent. I would like to know who all participate in the application review, because that may be an opportunity for principals, academic leaders, others to learn. Who knows, maybe start a school one day. But ultimately, I want to know who all participate in that process and be, if there are findings and opportunities, that we create a formal process to, that that, you know, cascade throughout the district. Even if we approve that school, if I'm the school, if I'm the neighboring district school, I want to know everything that school is doing in order to compete, right?
Fair enough.
So I just want to make sure that we don't miss those opportunities. And then the final statement would be, I know come July, you're going to present to us, and there'll be greens and yellows, somebody will, right? And we will hear from the nose, right, of all the things that they have done behind the scene, and it would be the normal banter of, "How do I engage board members and let them know that we should have been approving all the things that you've done wrong, even though the state have indicated that you run an excellent shop?" What are the learnings that you can tell us that would be different this time to prevent those things or prepare us for the fact that that's going to still be the case? Because if people are saying that it's treated like an RFP and there's no communication, right? And they say, "Well, we sent that," or "We tried to talk to him," I just want to feel better when I support you all and say no.
May I start with the last question first?
We asked one, and we run alone, so if I ask a lot, just answer whatever you want because I know you heard me, and I don't need all the answers today, but I think you, because I said I was making a statement, I ended up asking three questions. So I don't have to have all that intel now, but I think you know the position I'm taking.
I understand, and we have taken feedback from the board last year's round when we had 10 applications. We've made adjustments to what that protocol looks like, and we're happy to send a list of that information to Dr. Fagin's to share with the board of what that has entailed over time, and your other questions.
All right, we'll move to item 2.03, school transitions. So poor commissioners, what we have before us and the public is just a few schools who will experience a transition at this point as we think about facility concerns, some returning, some shifts. And so what we're doing here is just providing a transparent review of what those particular schools are. And so you should see this. Do you not see this? So first, no worries, we're here for you. Returning from ASD, we're talking about Humes Middle School here, going to BTW 6 through 12. And so we've provided a justification. And so just briefly, when we're looking at any transition, not just these particular schools, but as we think about what is to come, we're looking at a few, we're looking at several things, but three key things for sure. And so that is overall the proximity, if you will, of the closest school to the school that is being impacted. We're thinking about capacity when we look at the number of personnel and the number of students who are being transitioned and will be impacted by the transition. So how many students, how many classrooms does that necessitate in the next building? And what building could possibly hold these particular students? And we're also looking, obviously, at the building status. So not just physically us looking and eyeballing it, but a facilities assessment. And so what does that assessment say? What does it offer to us in terms of a recommendation of how we move forward? And that ultimately shapes what we determine about where we place our students and what that looks like. And certainly, any of these transitions consist of a lot of engagement with our families, and so being sure that we offer multiple opportunities in terms of sessions to communicate out next steps, how this will flow, to ensure that we're walking shoulder to shoulder with them in a transition and they do not feel neglected, or that they are just being, you know, generally dismissed. And so we have identified all of that from letters to robo-calls to emails, certainly virtual sessions, and then finally, in-person sessions with each of the schools that are impacted, as well as the staff as well, to answer any questions and concerns that they have. And so you see here the Humes Middle School to BTW. Would you like for me to read all of these? Yes, great. No? I'll do whatever we like. Would you like for me to read the schools or read the justification or?
I think it's just names, Mr.-
Which good name to schools, great. So Humes Middle School to BTW is one transition. We're looking at MLK High School to Tresvene High School. We're looking at Fairleigh High School returning from ASD. And then we have a couple of reopenings where there were some general structural or concerns and damages and challenges being experienced inside of the building. So we have Cummings K-8 and Peabody Elementary Schools returning to their respective locations to more enhanced spaces, if you will, with some renovations. And then we have some reconfiguration in terms of Hanley K-8 being reconfigured or returning back to a K-5 model. And so that's what you see expressed and explained here, open to any questions from board commissioners where we might need to dig a little deeper.
I have a question. Where is the transition plan?
Be a little more specific for me, Commissioner Love.
In my district, where is the transition plan from MLK to Tresvene High School?
So that's in May, so this is particular one is dealing with the state, and so we've presented that to them. And so once that is approved by the state, which they've generally shared that everything is fine, but once it's officially approved, then we have that transition plan that we bring.
This is my district.
Yes, ma'am.
I am speaking particularly Tresvene High School, two different schools on the same community. They are totally different. I want to be sure before the transition is processed, the schools have everything they need. It's better to put in than take away. I ain't talking about a resource officer. Services, discipline, teachers, the resources, it's better to take in than be without on the first day of school. Michelle is not here.
She's back there. She's back there.
Michelle, school board.
Michelle McKissick.
Yeah, McKissick.
Sorry, Michelle Stewart. We see you, though. Hello.
Good to see you, Michelle.
I'm very concerned that, say, Humes Middle School is going to South Memphis. The kids are going to South Memphis. B2W isn't South Memphis?
Yeah.
I would rather for them to get an experience with BTW before the first day of school. And the same thing goes for my district, that should go for Michelle's district.
So thank you. I believe I raised many of these concerns with the staff as well in terms of just general understanding.
You didn't.
You weren't finished with your question. Go ahead.
I will let you continue.
I thought you were finished. Go ahead, and then I'll just answer it all at one time.
But you didn't raise it with the board. We are in charge of our districts. We know the issues. We get parents and teacher complaints and students' complaints. It does no good to have your administration privy to everything, and the board just left without.
Tell me a little bit more, Commissioner Love, in terms of, it's my understanding that these conversations have taken place prior to my arrival, and so forgive me if they have not, I will own that. So it was a general understanding that this has already been shared, you know, at least at the surface level, and maybe a permanent decision had not been made. And so I'll own if that has not been given to you, you know, in a thorough manner. I think you understand, I want to provide all the information, so I'll own that piece in terms of the concerns.
The administration did a consult many months. That is not what I'm talking about.
Tell me, help me understand a little better.
If you change something within our districts, the board members are supposed to know. We get the phone calls, not you.
Do I have an understanding that you were not aware that Humes Middle School was going to transition to BTW? That was not the previous conversation?
No.
Got it. That is not my general understanding, and so I will own that.
That's found out today, and Laura called me.
She is great at that. I will own that you were not aware before you received it in the email last week and certainly are sharing today, but in terms of the conversation, it was my understanding that this at least been presented, so I own that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
The plan, when are you going to release the plan?
I don't know the exact date. Has the state given a date that it's available, Dr. White Law? They haven't given a date that they're going to provide a response, but we're waiting on their review of it, and then we'll share with the board.
I said, for the schools that are coming back to Memphis Shelby County Schools, what's the total funding that will go back into our enrollment, which would give us economies of scales to make some decisions? That's the first question, and I'll have a suggestion based on that answer.
So right now, we're looking at about $6 million when we're looking at enrollment, so when they shift from the enrollment, so, but the only thing I want to be clear on is just the estimation based on the number of students we expect to get back. Anything would change when 20th Day happens and actual students come in the building. So what we've done is we've started staffing those schools at the levels of what we expect from a projected enrollment basis, as well as set aside some money in the budget process for SCORP to bring those schools back up to speed for the students when they enter their building.
Okay, so my suggestion was to make sure that Commissioner Love and Commissioner McKissick saw some extra support since we are also going to have that back into our overall financial planning so that families and students have an easy transition. Thank you.
I have a question. Just how many students would be returning to the district with Fairleigh?
So currently, we're looking at anywhere in the neighborhood between 400 and 450. Right now, I think they got about 535 in the building, off the top of my head. So on a conservative side, we're looking at anywhere in the neighborhood of 400 and 450, and we've been actively recruiting even the teachers in the building as well as the students back to the district.
I have a question about Westside. What are we going to do about that building? Because I've been receiving emails from Bobby for six months now, seven months, eight months, but he, it's like the district went mute on him. And this is before your time, but you are the superintendent now.
So Ms. Love, great question. I think, I don't want to speak for Michelle, but we've been in works with Mr. White. I think some things have changed from the perspective of either wanting to buy the building, wanting to lease the building. To be fair to Dr. Fagin, she wasn't in the seat, but we've been trying to bring her up to speed quickly so we can ensure that it works for both parties when it comes to Westside. And of course, we'll bring you along the way as we do.
Okay, so we'll move forwards with some general contract presentations. I won't read everything, but just present it for the board's review, and if you have any questions, feel free to just jump in and ask. 2.04 is Memphis Symphony Orchestra Contract. They were generally familiar with that, we want to continue it. We were able to offer fine arts to more students, side-by-side concerts, and so this is just overall a phenomenal opportunity for students fifth grade to experience as we think about how to expand it, look for more funding. Item 2.05, Teaching Strategies Contract. I were just recommending for the board to approve this request for the creative curriculum. So this would be a new curriculum here, but I can speak from experience with creative curriculum. It's an evidence-based curriculum, has profound results when implemented well, of course, and so we're recommending this for use for our preschool students in order to shore up and strengthen up the foundational skills that they receive.
Adam Superintendent, is this a new contract?
This is a new contract.
Okay. And what were we using before? And so just to let you know, establish what I normally ask when we see a contract, I want to know if it's a recurring contract, if we're voting on it, and if it's a new contract, what's the why? And I saw the descriptor there, and then if anyone else bid on it as well. And so in this case, I'm good because I am too familiar with the product.
Okay.
But I was curious if this was, and also, it's always helpful if, are they replacing something else? Like, I always challenge the administration on, "Don't be afraid to tell us what's not working."
Absolutely.
And I think too often, we just slide in a new product, and we just nod and agree and vote. I mean, just say, so, because you get to inform the next generation of elected bodies, say, "Hey, that product that we bought three years ago didn't quite cut it, right? And here is what it's called." And again, we don't want to besmirch an organization if it wasn't their fault, sometimes it's implementation.
That is correct.
Right? But, uh, it's always good intel to have a backdrop of, uh, of, of the why. And so, uh, for this is, is helpful. So I'll try to not talk too much, but that's one of the things I like to know if, if it's a new product or it's a recurring expense.
Sure, I can give you all the background moving forward.
And I can clarify that real quick. Um, it is state mandated sped pre-K curriculum. Um, it's mandated for all pre-K classes across the state, so it's not a choice, it's a, a TDOE mandated curriculum.
We are on the.
You want, you have a question about this one?
Memphis Symphony Orchestra.
Want to go back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I have a question. Is this a new contract and all vendors? I need a list of all vendors that participated.
So this one's recurring, so we just want to, we're recommending for the board to approve that we continue with this particular contract?
Thank you.
But I note that if anything's new you want to list, I note that. Item. Where are we? Two point zero six? Memphis Teacher Residency Contract? I'm a little off here.
Yes ma'am.
So here we're just recommending, this is also recurring, so we're just recommending for the continuation, uh, of our partnership with, uh, Memphis Teacher Residency. Had the opportunity to speak with many teachers who have taken part in this and so I consider it to be something, a good way forward in terms of pipeline development and how we strengthen our personnel and capacity. Two point zero seven, Knowledge Tree Supplies for 2024 Summer Learning Academy. Uh, the recommendation, this is a new purchase approval and so if someone could speak to who kind of bitted for this or, or how that, uh, for that general background, that'd be great.
I have a question about Knowledge Tree. Why are they getting, why have they become the exclusive vendors for this district? And teachers are required, even with the money.
That they receive from the state to do their classrooms and mini schools to only spend at Knowledge Tree? And I have a concern about that. Why do they have a monopoly on school supplies in Shelby County Schools?
So Mr. Commissioner Williams, um, good question. Um, so what we talked about is when we met with teachers, uh, to your very point, we heard from them this year that they want other options. So what our commitment is to, uh, the, the teachers in this district is that we'll, we'll procure more products and do more master service agreements so they can do things like, uh, use Amazon and other Oriental Trading and things of that nature. So, um, I'll take it on myself as procurement officer to cast a wider net so that we can use additional, uh, opportunities for teachers.
Well, my concern was, most of the schools, the teachers never got the money, it was sent directly to Knowledge Tree, they just went out there and signed a piece of paper. So they never saw what they had to get even, to even shop. And so, so Knowledge Tree clearly had a monopoly on the whole thing. Are you saying that all money that was given to teachers was spent at Knowledge Tree this year?
No, sir, that's not what I'm saying, so.
Well, that's what happened.
I'm not sure that's what happened, we can, we can.
At every school that I have polled, they were told the money was sent to Knowledge Tree, you had to go out there and spend your money there or you didn't get it. And the law says that every teacher gets four hundred or whatever they get, but all of the, all of the teachers in Shelby County Schools were forced to spend the money with Knowledge Tree only. And I see this says Knowledge Tree on here that you're going to do.
This, this particular item is for the Summer Learning Academy.
But, but the money's going to be allocated to Knowledge Tree too.
So, so this money is for Knowledge Tree according to the curriculum that's going to be used for summer.
What is the connection that Knowledge Tree had with Shelby County Schools?
Knowledge Tree just has, is just one of the vendors who has a master's service agreement with it, with Memphis Shelby County Schools.
But it is the most expensive.
It's not a monopoly, if you will. Again, what we have to do a better job of is casting our net wider and giving more opportunities, which is again, one of the things we've heard and one of the things that we'll do.
Does the law that gives teachers the right to spend the four hundred dollars require them to spend it at Knowledge Tree?
No, sir.
Why would we do it?
Because, uh, again, according to our procurement processes, again, as I mentioned before, we just have to cast our net a little wider. And the number is actually only two hundred dollars per teacher.
Per semester.
And we gave them three hundred dollars this year.
Well, you gave it to them, but you took it back because you gave it in one and you gave it to Knowledge Tree. You didn't give it to them. Because they never saw the money.
Happy to talk offline about the concerns with you, Board Commissioner.
I think that's a grave concern for Knowledge Tree to capitalize completely, one hundred percent monopoly on Shelby County Schools.
Yes.
Move on to item two point zero eight, Compass Intervention Lakeside Behavior Mental Health Contract. So this is also recurring. Um, this allows us to provide those comprehensive services for our students, uh, in, in all regards. Um, any questions there? Item two point zero nine is the MOU with Wellchild Inc. This approves a five-year renewable MOU, uh, for continued services as well. Um, this is the MOU that's between Wellchild and the district, uh, for preventative health. And so this is a fluoride treatments, uh, and general treatments in that regard. Item two point one zero is the U.S. Department and if it pleases the board, I would like to group items two point one zero, two point one one, two point one two, two point one three and two point one four as they are all similar in nature and that we are accepting donations, uh, or grant awards, uh, as written from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Equipment, Verizon Innovative Labs, NAP Foundation Grant and Latin Grammy Cultural Foundation Grant and Community Foundation of Greater Memphis Grant. And if it pleases the board as well, I'd like to add item two point one five and that will be Phase One Capital Investments. So you have a general handout, uh, Board Commissioners, it's rather large, if you will. It's the largest sheet that you have in your possession. Uh, title, Phase One Capital Budget Request. And so as we talk about investments, if you will, I'd like to make sure that we understand that we're talking about investing in student achievement. And you can see at the bottom of the page, we've been sure to include, uh, the priority three. And it reads in part that we're preparing students, if you will, for the global workforce and we recognize that this should and absolutely must take place in high-quality facilities, uh, and learning environments. And so when we think about investments, it's generally just associated with numbers and money, uh, which matters. But when we think about it on the, in the terms of student achievement and who we are really trying to shape our young people into, then that's how I'd like for the board and the general public to begin to hear it and review it. And so what we've done as a team is think about this in different phases, uh, with Phase One being those most immediate needs, uh, that we need to take care of. Uh, and this is without consideration for any new buildings or what could come in the, the, the future that is near for some, but very far off when you are sitting in a building every day, four years away or three years down the line, is, is, is quite far. And so how we've prioritized it, you can see from numerically going in order. We've also thought about it, you see the subtotal there for those first projects, one through thirty-six is about sixty-one million. Uh, we've given you, uh, the cost, uh, the design cost and then what it would take to commission some of these services and then a, a total cost. We've also given it to you with a, a review of the enrollment by these respective schools, which also plays a part in how we prioritize where the needs are. Uh, as we think about what the descriptions are, that's the work, um, that is necessary. So you see a lot of roof replacements, you see a lot of LED lighting upgrades, you see up, up, up top, uh, some replacements for fire detection systems as we think about, you know, our fire safety that we're investing almost about twenty thousand a month, if you will, um, because we have not been able to meet these particular needs at these schools. And so we're paying money one way or the other and so we'd like to make the investment in such a way, um, that we're, we can stop making unnecessary payments and expenditures, uh, and be able to invest those funds in a more concerted and strategic way. If you flip over to the back, you will see another set, still priority, but how we thought about, you know, this is looking at window replacements, uh, you're looking at, um, lighting for athletics, you're looking at pavement for entire lots. And so it is still important, but if we had to just, you know, think about what's most important, it'd be that top part on the front page, but this still being equally as important as we think about our Phase One work. And so naturally if there's Phase One, then we have Phase Two, which kind of looks at more of our buildings that have been in return from the facilities assessment, meaning those who went out and really looked at the buildings to provide us an FCI score. As we think about shaping the larger capital, capital facilities plan that takes, you know, place over a, a year long's time in terms of ten to fifteen or twenty years, whatever we determine to be. And then Phase Three being, you know, the latter, the latter end of that facility assessments work, uh, and what the overall investment will require. And so breaking it down, making it more manageable and more understandable about how we plan to, A, ask for the funds that we need, how we plan to utilize the funds that we have on our own, uh, and then of course move along to Phase Two, which will start to overlap, if you will, in terms of the work and the RFP and all the processes that are included. And then ultimately in Phase Three, which will start to see, you know, our new bills come to light in life and then more of the work that will take place on the latter end. And so if you take a, a review of that, give, I'll just pause to see if there's any questions, uh, for us.
I have a question. I think all of us probably have a building challenge that we have in mind, said, this is not on front or backside. How do we determine where, you know, when our schools ask us, when is this flooding or when is this going to stop? How do we know where they're at in terms of priority? Um, and then I'd just like an update on the, like, timeline for a comprehensive facilities plan and how we plan to roll that out. And then I'm, I'm making the assumption we've compared against what we already know in the facilities plan. So just, please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Right, so what we know internally, we have work orders and I think you're mentioning, hey, we have this general issue that has been submitted, uh, through the process for the district and what if my school asked me about that? And so the team was tasked with looking at both and, and so there's general work that we can handle internally with our personnel that we have, uh, in operations and so that work continues. And so what the team is working on now is providing that exact timeline that you're asking. What I've asked for is specifically who's doing the work, what's the particular time to close these work orders out because we have far too many. Uh, and then certainly this lists more of the things that we don't have the capacity to do, uh, either immediately or at all because we just don't have the capacity. So the roof replacements and things of that nature. It's also being delivered in consideration with how do we do a better job of maintaining facilities so that we're not in this predicament ten years down the road? So what are we looking at every five years, every seven years? What needs to be worked on so that we do a better job of maintaining our facilities? And then as you ask about the overall capital facilities plan, and so with the two new bills, we did meet with the architectures, generally give the go to move forward with the design because that work has already been, uh, encumbered in terms of funding. And also we don't want to delay unnecessarily, uh, what we've communicated to the public in terms of, uh, construction, um, and an opening, if you will, to be in the building. And so still planning to be on track and on target with that work as it existed prior to my arrival and all of the community engagement sessions that took place. I think overall the plan that you're asking about, we're waiting for about fifty more schools, if you will, uh, to receive that assessment, facility assessment, um, update, looking at the FCI score so that we can look collectively about how to position the work. Certainly the funding matters, but how to position the work as we think about ten, fifteen or twenty-year plan, uh, and what that will take. We will provide.
Sorry, go ahead, please.
It's okay. We will provide a general update. It'll be an opportunity for me to connect with those who have been involved, the steering committees, subcommittees, uh, provide an update, much of the same, just a little bit more, um, about where we are now, some tentative next steps so that no one's left out just wondering. Uh, and then certainly once we receive those results, expected in December, if you will, for the latter fifty, uh, buildings. And then we'll have a, a better idea about how we move forward.
I think, I think I've communicated this to Michelle Stewart and she may have already shared this with you as well. We also have a lot of requests from the community for either schools or community partners who want access to our buildings. And I know you're still, there's probably many requests that are before us, but I'd like to, I would like for us to come up with a process where community requests are heard regularly. Even if, even if the recommendation from your team is, we can't give you, um, an answer at this point and here's why, and then we will give you an update in six months. Because I, I do know that there are community partners who have been waiting literally years for us to respond to leases or purchases or, um, who are, are working in faith with us and I, and the facilities plan has, has been the response. But what, I want to be pragmatic about how fast that's going to move and what it means for kids or other communities who could utilize our buildings and then also generate revenue for us. So I would like, we can talk offline about coming up with a way that just has a public discussion around it and then puts those proposals in front of us with regularity. So our community partners, I think that's about building trust too, so.
Yeah, I think what you're lifting is that general gap, I think I've shared with the team about real estate, uh, we just don't have that particular personnel there. And so as we look at structure and organization specifically for business operations, the operations department, um, that is something that we have discussed, so we can lead this work. Uh, we are a business, if you will, and so there's opportunities for revenue and so if there are individuals who are interested, we certainly want to hear from them. Uh, but more importantly, as you're speaking to, we want to be able to provide, uh, a, a, a response and a way forward, uh, whatever that might look like. And so the team is generally working through that as we think about overall, um, being able to meet that gap, uh, in terms of real estate, but also a process.
Madam Superintendent, uh, first of all, uh, I, I do want to commend you for being a quick study. I, I think the way you've gone through, uh, this exhaustive list, uh, knowing the challenges, reading your, uh, pressers regarding, uh, infrastructure, uh, and not being shy about the hard conversation that this body will have to take on. And the superintendent will be tasked to walk alongside this board, particularly around consolidation, district rightsizing, so I applaud you for that. Um, but this is a heavy lift, right? This is a big lift. It's something that should be talked about ongoing. Um, I, I see Ms. Stewart, I, I hear the community partners, but I think employees have to be empowered. I think it's okay for Michelle to say, it's not for sale. Stop calling me. That, right, because there are certain buildings we know are going to be a part of the broader footprint and it's simply, we're not there yet. And it's okay to say, stop calling me about building X. I don't have to poll nine board members. If it's on a main thoroughfare or it's a competing school next door, the answer is no. And you don't need to talk to me to get that answer.
Yeah.
And because I believe that the majority of the board will, 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 will coalesce around the idea that we're not, we're not building any new land, new, new properties, right? It's, it's only a certain supply of it. And so we cannot let, uh, opportunists, you know, seize on the, the big challenge facing this body. And I know that's not what my colleague is indicating, but she gets the call, we all get them. My ask is empower your employees to tell them, stop calling us. All right, so, and that's the first part. And then second, obviously, we need a formal process, right? If we have a lease, you know, we should have technology to say if a lease is expiring.
Right.
That there is some notification, some trigger. My iPhone tells me the next meeting I'm supposed to be in, which is why I stepped out early, I apologize. But the truth is, we should get indicators of when a lease is expiring and that organization should be told, yes, we want to renew and no, we don't. Empower staff to make those calls. And I'm, I, I anticipate you will do that and I know the frustration that, uh, my colleagues have there, but I do think it's important to applaud you on this challenge and then to make sure that the board is prepared to walk alongside you because no organization is, is going to willingly write that check. And so I don't know if you're going to get to the part, but I saw letters, I saw communication to elected officials making the ask early and often. Uh, we want to walk alongside with you because that's going to be a big lift, uh, that you guys are going to carry. Uh, and again, I applaud your team for getting us this far as well and I'm, I'm, I'm expecting good things to come from this. Because these things, no matter how much we talk about academics, it's the things that we can see, that we can touch, that says that we're running a great system or not, right? Is there a new sports field? Are they well lit? I see Dr. Richmond back there, always talking about our athletic programs because why? It matters to students. It matters to families. So that is what we want to see as board members. And quite honestly, we've talked about it too long and I am confident that action is coming. So I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Uh, remain confident because that's where we are. And so as you have alluded to the great work of the team for sure, uh, it is also, uh, that we have tried to expand what team looks like for us. And so we have, uh, I, I think I mentioned in my interview about not being afraid of professionally begging and so we started that early. And so we have reached out to, uh, both mayors. Uh, we have written letters, um, we have presented this, you know, exact Phase One, if you will, and presented it as it is necessary, uh, for the contribution to be made. And so for Mayor Young in the city of Memphis, uh, we've shared the same with the council as well and will probably anticipate having to go and make a presentation about the same as soon as that is given to us. And so not being afraid to ask, uh, for the money and, and ask. And so not being afraid to ask for the money and ask and share what that looks like as a partnership. And so it is about the things that you can see. It is saying that, you know, if this investment is given, we will say that it is as a result of and on the shoulders and the funding of the city of Memphis and not being afraid to own that. It's also having the conversations. We've been in the rooms with our philanthropic leaders in terms of what they're looking for, and they're generally eager to contribute as well. And so we've had those conversations, and we'll continue to have the conversations individually with our county commissioners to really just share in a more tangible way that you're seeing here rather than a big, we're looking to do something big for facilities and being able to answer some questions on the front end before we make the official presentation for our budget. As I shared and opened with, this is about student achievement. And so if we can't have the type of learning environments that are conducive to the same, then we can anticipate having the same results as it concerns academics. And none of this is absent of athletics. I am a firm believer in the arts and the athletics and the academics. And so we can do all of the above, and that's what we intend to do. But before we get to the innovation, we have to think about just providing a better place for students where they are right now. And so no student should sit in a space where the roof is leaking on their head. And certainly, what we know and we have experience and what you generally hear as board commissioners. And so we plan to continue to lift this work, do all the presentations that we need, take along the voices of babes so that they can support us in the requests as well and share their own hands-on experiences in their rooms, and then certainly be working with you alongside to advocate loudly and consistently so that we get the money that we need.
I have a question. Is lighting part of the capital improvement, lighting?
Lighting.
Yeah.
So in this case, there's some LED lighting, which is generally a little more complex for the internal team to do, but then there's some general lighting to improve that our internal team can do, and that's not listed here. So what we can do is give the work orders, and you can see some more if that's where we're going.
Yeah. Because I visit lots of schools, and the lighting is dim.
Yeah.
And kids can't read.
That's right.
In dark places.
Yes. So that would be, most of that is like just fixing some structures like this, and that's internal. So I'll make sure we get a copy, we get the list of the work orders that are being handled internally.
Second question. What criteria is the administration using to prioritize the schools?
So we generally looked at the costs, one. Certainly, we looked at enrollment as we've placed on here. And so when you're looking at the utilization, all of these schools are, for the most part, you know, pretty full, at least halfway full. And so that means there are a lot of people in the building that are impacted by the work that has not been done. And so a lot of this work has not been done for several years as well. So it's the timeframe in which this exists. And then, of course, it's still alongside, considering what we're doing internally in terms of the general work orders that are being submitted. And so when you think about fire, life, safety, when we're out of order for replacing our fire detection system for a school with the size of Germantown High School, you know, nearly 2,000 students, then we consider that to be high priority. But it's also something that's going to cost us, you know, about 1.5 million, and we don't have the internal capacity to do that. And so that's what made it priority, number one here. But that's how we generally thought about the remaining schools on the list.
Is this going to be sent out to the principal?
So yes, we plan to share this publicly so that everyone is generally aware of where we, what our thoughts are about Phase 1, and they will be able to share as well.
Are the elementary schools going to be impacted by the summer school?
Meaning, will any of this work impact the summer learning that's coming up? I don't know that we will generally get started with a lot of these, but I think in some of the space, we'll be able to give the critical attention necessary to ensure that it doesn't impact the students.
Madam Superintendent, we don't have the money for this, right? We're planning to ask for this funding, correct? I'm looking at, Tito's going to start doing this.
I think that's a fair way to summarize it. I mean, we have owned that there's a contribution we have to give as well, and so we'll do a capital campaign. But we also own that there's some immediate needs, that if we have to shift some funds, we are ready to do. But if we can receive the funds, then, of course, that makes the way forward a lot easier, and we can start the RFP process a lot faster.
And we've done that before, of course. You know, one of the things, I know you and I have spoken about implementation, you know, there are the political reality and also the funding priorities of the county and the city. Like last year, as you may know, they gave us zero.
Yes.
So, you know, just saying that we need to have a strategy, which I know you're good at. But we have to, and we can talk offline on this, but I know Patrice Thomas is going after money for two big schools, but then we have other things. And right now, these people are not giving us much, right? So I'm just going to say, like, somebody needs to own this process. Somebody on this team should wake up every day thinking about loving these two big bodies, particularly the county, because, you know, I'm just saying that we need to have a game plan for that. No, just goodwill and best intentions is just not going to get us there.
No, we're definitely prepared to divide and conquer. We have certainly strategized a way forward to really, I mean, respectfully overwhelm the powers that be with the need. Don't plan to be silent about the ask and certainly the impact if we do not receive what it is that we're asking for. And so we've thought about it clearly. We've scheduled, you know, conversations already as early as Thursday of this week. And so we've had some that have taken place already. And so we plan to be, you know, ready to present the ask regardless with as much information as we need to. I think that as we think about the county for sure being our funding body, that's one. But we think about all of the different measures and ways that we can really, you know, acquire some of these funds. That's what we've been really thinking about as well. So how do we really spread the opportunity to contribute to as many people as possible? So certainly through capital campaign, but also being very strategic about our different funding entities and those who generally want to contribute in some way.
And Madam Superintendent, I just want to, as an infrastructure chair, just encourage my colleagues, we don't have to wait for permission to engage our elected officials. You know, now that we're on with information, let them know the challenge, let them know what we're facing. As Deion Sanders says, let them know we're coming. And so I'm confident that we can get these dollars. Superintendent, when we prepare for the retreat, just for learning for me, when we have business system reviews, they're kind of quick, get a snapshot. I want to know how we deliver service from ops, like from top down, like from the time a work order comes in, who receives it, how does it go? How do we go from, I got a problem, to it being resolved? And how do board members receive that information? Because when you run the marathon, you also want to, you know you've got six miles left, but I'm sure, you know, you want to remind yourself, you just finished 20. And so when I see this list, I see a big challenge ahead of us, but I'm sure there is somebody doing good work, and there's a work order that got completed today, right? There's a leak that got fixed. And so just, you know, how does that, what does that look like operationally? And so I would just like to have that part of our learning during our retreat as well.
Absolutely. All hearts composed, we can move on to procurement committee.
Could you give me at least five minutes?
We're in stretch break. Calm your hearts and stretch your minds. All right, let's do five.
Turn your mic up for a second.
I guess that's a good way to know who works for which department.[1114.73]
With item 2.01, LADD athletic field prep services.
So Board Commissioners, this is just an amendment to the contract to include all practice field prep services for athletic fields. Previously, it was just, you know, just a few sports, and so now we're just amending it to include all.
Any questions? Item 2.02, American paper untwin.
So this is recommending for the Board to award this particular contract is it's recurring, so we already have it. This is just for paper supplies.
Any questions? All right, item 2.03 Ford Road Elementary School flooring repairs.
So this is new. This particular project is for Ford Road Elementary School and Annex Building, and so it's to replace the existing damaging flooring. This particular damage was caused by busted sprinkler heads, and so this will replace the flooring in the Annex Building.
Any question? Okay. 2.04 Avon Lennox chiller replacement.
This is new as well, and so this is the completely remove and, you know, demolish, if you will, and then certainly replace the existing HVAC chiller for a new energy efficient one.
This seems really, is this low?
Is it low?
This seems less expensive than what I've seen for other chiller replacements, so it's not a, is it a total, or is this in line with what we typically pay for a new chiller?
For a chiller, when you think about it in terms of a full HVAC, this is for a, uh.
Yeah, this is just replacing the chiller, as you can see, you're thinking about normally in a typical HVAC and versus the, I know you know the size of the building, so this is in line with what we see normally see for a chiller.
That's a very good point, the Avon, the Lennox Lions are mine, and down the street, it is a smaller building, thank you for that. Item 2.05 Hamilton High School AHU 25 replacement.
So this is new as well, this will replace the air handler unit and replace it with a new one and the controls. This was caused by a broken fan casing, shaft bearings, and then just the general age of the unit.
Item 2.06 Treadwell Northeast Regional RTU replacement.
So this is much like the Ford Elementary, just completely removing and demolishing and then ultimately replacing the HVAC, the rooftop unit with a new energy efficient one.
2.07 Trezover High School Ninth Grade Academy renovations.
So this is new, generally for the students at the new Ninth Grade Academy, and so this is where we would do new countertops and paint for the science lab stations and just general improvements to improve the learning environment.
Are we going to continue to use this building once the new high school is built?
I think that's a fair ask without a response right now that we can circle back to.
Okay. Item 2.08 Trezover High School chiller replacement.
This is new, recommending that we allow this project to move forward for the same, removing, demolishing, and replacing the HVAC chiller with a new energy efficient one.
Then last item 2.0.
I have a question. Trezover High School getting, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Tito. Trezover High School got a new chiller system five years ago?
I would have to check that one, Ms. Love, so to give you an accurate answer.
I would have to check that one to give you an accurate answer on if they got one five years ago, but I can get that to you tonight if you.
And research it, um, didn't the Board have to invest some more money because the work wasn't done right?
I'll get that answer for you as well, so I'll give you a comprehensive answer of what happened. If we got the chiller five years ago, if something happened with the warranty of it, I'll get you the full answer tonight.
Any other questions on that item?
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, it does lead me to another question. Are all schools equipped with just a singular chiller, or are there multiple chiller boilers in buildings? And here's the deal, I don't need to answer them for that now, but if there are, when you are bringing it to us, we probably want to identify if it's chiller A, chiller B, so if we do get that question, it could be a facility with multiple systems.
Got it, we'll make that adjustment.
Yeah, thank you.
Item 2.09 Portable Classrooms Demolition.
So this is to remove the ISOs, if you will, in these parking lots and generally just being associated with our buildings, and so this is for the demolition and then ultimately the removal of the portable classroom buildings.
Do we have a list of which schools have portables demolished or removed?
Yes, we can get you a list of what has happened in the past, what this consists of, which is listed here, and then if we have any more, I do believe, I don't want to speak out of turn, but we'll get it for you, but this is the last line of the portables that we have on our properties.
This is just, I know, not only they look unsightly, they also attract animals and they're unsafe when you go in them, so it is, it is just a hazard, so I'm glad that we are doing this, thank you. Any, any final questions? That concludes the Procurement Committee. Thank you.
Now, we are going to go to Policy Governance and Legislation. Item 2.10, School Board Meetings.
Good afternoon, thank you Commissioner Love, good afternoon Commissioners and Madam Superintendent, Annette Wade, Policy Advisor for Governmental Affairs and Compliance. We provided a folder with some information this afternoon for you. We just have a few items that we want to quickly run through, and Ms. Erica, if you don't mind going to Slide 3, we're going to take this in just a little different order here. So we are bringing today the proposed schedule for the Biennial Policy Manual Review. As you know, state law requires us to, at least every two years, go through a biennial review of our policies, and that would be to, of course, ensure that we are in compliance with state law, that our policies are reflective of current practices and so forth. So we are in the process of starting that now, and so what you see in front of you is a proposed review schedule. So we have started that in our office, and we have provided you today with hard copies of Section 0000 to the 1000 section. We'll be reaching out to you to see how you prefer that in the future, bless you. But as you see, every one to two months, we'll be reviewing specific sections of the policy manual and getting feedback from you all and making any necessary revisions. We do want to make you aware that as an added layer of review, this year we're asking that staff responsible departments, responsible for specific work within a section, also review that section so that we're making sure that our practices are aligned with requirements within the policy. The proposed schedule is adjustable, and we will, of course, take the time that is needed to ensure that our policies are thoroughly reviewed within each section. So again, today we've provided you hard copies. Our manager, Maria Stewart, who is unable to be here today, will be reaching out to you very soon with some information on how to receive and how you want to receive and provide feedback on any necessary revisions. Also, she'll be asking how you want these sections in the future, whether you want a hard copy versus, you know, virtual, or, excuse me, electronic. So going back to Slide 2, please, Ms. Erica. We are bringing today for discussion Policy 0000, that's School Board Meetings, and in our internal review, we did come across a section of the policy that brought up a question. Specifically, it's on Page 2 of that policy, which you do have a card, a hard copy, and it's related to who may call a special called meeting. And we understand that there have been some questions about that, so just to note, what we have in policy is aligned to the language of the law. But we wanted to bring to the Board the question, do you need a revision to that section to add more clarity, or is it fine as it is written? And that's for your discussion, please let us know, and we'll be happy to do whatever.
Is that Page 2, you said?
That's Page 2 of the 00 policy. Yes, it's on Page 2, and if you look down to, actually, I have it here.
So I think before, you posed a question to us in that you pulled this language from state law. Can you provide your interpretation of the policy?
I would, actually, if you'll allow me, I will defer that question to our legal counsel, Chief Horton, thank you.
Members of the Board, good afternoon. If you look at section, it's where it says special call meetings, it is the first sentence, it says special call meetings may be scheduled by the Board Chair whenever in his/her judgment it is in the best interest of the district, or when requested to do so by a majority of the Board. So based on our interpretation, obviously, the Board Chair can call a special call meeting. And then the second section is our opinion that when a majority of the members are requesting a special call meeting, they can request the Board Chair to call a special call meeting. I think what, one of the issues that we are kind of discussing and looking at the policy is a question of timing and availability, because there could be a time when the Chair is out of town and disposed, and when it, and what kind of time period are you looking to have a special call meeting? I would not want to box you in in terms of a time, but you could say some recommended time or suggested time within three business days, but you also have to understand, sometimes it's difficult to get a majority of the Board here within a short period of time and on short notice.
So what I'm hearing you say is that we really need to address two concerns. One, in the event that the Chair isn't available, should we have language that says, who didn't make the call? Is it the Vice Chair?
It would be the Vice Chair, yes.
Or is the Chair required to make the call if the majority of the Board wants to have a special call meeting? Meaning that if five Board members say we want to have a special call meeting, is the Chair still the proxy? Is it the Chair shall call, or the Chair may call?
I think it's the Chair shall call.
Okay, so that, so that clears that up, so meaning that, so I think what we want clarity on, and you guys, the drafter can decide what that language looks like, and I'm speaking as one individual, is that if the law says that five Board members can call a meeting and the Chair shall call the meeting, in the event that the Chair isn't available, is it, then should we have to codify that the Vice Chair is empowered to call that meeting? Because we already have policy says that in the absence of the Chair, the Vice Chair is empowered. So do we need additional commentary to address that?
I think you do, because the question then gets into what's availability.
Okay.
Are they out of town, are they sick, and so you could have some issues where it could be, I'm out of town for today and tomorrow, I'll be back on Thursday, and you know, by that time, you could have a call meeting scheduled.
I think I'm missing the problem here. Like, if five, if five Board members, so is it written as such where there are five Board members who are asking for a special call meeting, that the Board Chair is required to call a special call meeting, or can they say no if they are not of the mind that we don't need a special call meeting? Is, like, what is?
I think if you have, if you have five Board members, based on the way that we interpret it and the way it's written, the Board Chair has to call the special call meeting. The question gets down to availability and the time.
But we only need five to do business, so is, are we worried about the availability of the Chair?
Or just availability of the Board members?
Yeah, I, okay, I, yes, we need to have five for availability, yes. But I didn't know if it was a, if the problem we were trying to solve is that we want a special call meeting and the Board Chair cannot be there. I thought that was the challenge you were presenting.
Well, if the Board Chair is not there, in our policy, the Vice Chair is the one that takes up the chair.
Correct. Yeah, that, that I understood, but I didn't realize you were talking about general availability of a quorum.
So I'll speak a little more on it, and you, Ms. Garcia, you mentioned the challenge. In the event that a special call meeting, again, this is not hypothetical, recently, there was a, a time when Board members had been polled for a special call meeting, but the Chair wasn't available. And so ultimately, the Chair was able to be reached and we were able to get that scheduled, but do we need language to say that within a certain time that that meeting would be called, or do we need language that says that, you know, the Chair or the Vice Chair could, could post that meeting? And again, I'm indifferent on it, but I do think that we need, we need to, we don't need a different Board, year over year, interpreting this policy different, and I, I felt administratively, there was uncertainty in the interpretation of the policy. And so if there is, and that's what I think the organization, the department is, can help with, if there's any question, just make it clear. You know, so if someone is reading this tomorrow, or another general counsel is reading it, should it just be written clear so that General Counsel Horton's interpretation is what a fifth grader could read and interpret?
Sure, and what we can do is we can take the language that currently is written, which is, again, the language of the law. We can simplify that, we can break that down, we can bullet it, we can, you know, whatever we need to do to make it very clear, and then we will also add the, the responsibility, the Vice Chair in absence of the Chair is actually in Policy 0004, and so what we can do is just add that same language into 0000 so that the two are, are referenced together. And that would be basically that in the event that the Board Chair is not available, the Vice Chair presides at meetings. And then as far as the language itself regarding who can call a, a special called meeting, breaking it down, in the event a majority of the Board requests a special called meeting, the Board Chair would do so.
Okay, so if there's no objection, Board members, the ask is on, is before us, is to have clearly defined language so that anyone picking up this document knows who can call the meeting. Quite frankly, I don't ever want to get a call again from an administrator debating me on a policy that I've been reading for a decade. So I think it's clear that the majority of the Board can call a special call meeting, and if it needs to be clearly written, I'm asking you all to do that for us.
We will take care of that. So at this point, Dabney Ring will provide legislative updates whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent, I'm Dabney Ring. Just before I start the slides, just to give you kind of a brief picture of where we are, they're about a week away from adjourning, they're in a modified flow motion, which means they can get a bill from the committee to the floor in less time than normal, and so things are moving fast. I noticed today that the, the budget amendment documents are starting to hit the committees, so I expect we'll be wrapping up sooner than later. So the first bill is Senate Bill 503, House Bill 1183, which is the school voucher bill. It is widely assumed that this bill will not pass this year, however, things can happen when there's a will, and the Senate today even said that there is some money in the budget for a voucher program, so we're watching that closely. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 1325, House Bill 1202 is the arming teachers bill. The bill has passed the Senate, it's currently on the table in the House, which means it's just kind of paused in place. But the House sponsor, Ryan Williams, is expected to pick that up if he hasn't already and put it through the, the process. I think it only has to be on the floor in the House. There are some provisions about MOUs and permission from the principal, the superintendent, and the local law enforcement that need to be in place. There's some extended training, there is an enhanced permit to allow it, it does allow SROs, former police, to carry a firearm, which means anything, including a handgun, but also anything beyond a handgun. And it has to be concealed, if it's a handgun, it has to be concealed, you can't take it in stadiums, gymnasiums, so there are a lot of provisions in place, but it is expected to pass before the session ends. Next slide, please. Senate Bill 2183, House Bill 2326 is a fourth grade retention policy. As y'all may remember or know, when the third grade retention policy was passed last session, there were still some questions about what we do with fourth graders who, who, who moved on to fourth grade, but their TCAP scores still aren't kind of where they need to be. So there's a bill that would allow for them to continue on to fifth grade with a parent teacher conference, some learning, some tutoring, some summer learning academies. The House and Senate bill are a little bit different, so we're waiting to see which one is going to move forward. And the Senate version has a sunset provision after two years, and so they're thinking that if it's still a problem, they'll have time to fix it in a real looked at legislation, whereas right now, this is just kind of a Band-Aid on the problem. So we're working on that bill now.
Can I ask a, or make a request of our academics team, because I've had a couple of parents reach out. They're like, well, my student was, like, got an appeal, and so is this true? Like, when we, when we have the final legislation saying, like, if your student mastered, nothing applies. If you want an appeal, this is what happens, so they very clearly know what's happening in fourth and fifth grade. So I think I've had more than one mom friend and constituent reach out and say, I don't know what my kid's required to do. So when we have that final, can our academics team put something easy to understand together?
And the first step in both bills, and I think this is helpful to an extent, is kind of a parent teacher conference where they say, you know, here, here's where your child is, we can promote them or we can retain them, here's what both options look like, and I do think that will be helpful to parents because it's a more full picture thing, but again, rules I have to put in place. But again, rules I have to put in place of what that looks like.
Yeah, and I think we also have a lot of kids without a permanent teacher, and that messaging could get lost. So anything we can do from a district perspective too.
Oh, of course, of course.
I knew you were suggesting both, but I agree.
Right.
It will be helpful.
And we'll make sure that that final bill gets to everybody. The next slide is the slide we've been working on, the bill we've been working on for the underutilized buildings. It is still making its way. It's passed the Senate. It's supposed to be heard in the House tomorrow. They have added some language about the purchase, when the public charter school purchased the building, and then it either closes or decides to move to another building, that gives the LEA their first right of refusal to purchase the building back. But that is the only significant change that's been made in the bill since I last talked to y'all about it. And we still think that there are some issues with the bill. Next slide, and this is my last slide. Senate Bill 1266, House Bill 692. This bill was, the achievement school district was put into the voucher bill about kind of going away from achievement school district. And now that the voucher bill's kind of stolen, there's some pressure to go back to this bill. The Senate has passed it. The House has it on the table as well, but it can be picked up and passed. And so there's still different versions. Most of these bills have a different version between the House and the Senate. So there'll either have to be some agreements or there'll be some conference committees. And we won't know until the bill passes both which way it's going to go. The House, the Senate version kind of creates a different type of district that is controlled by the LEA. So it's not separate from the LA. It's within the LEA. And it can be run by a charter school, a university, independent turnaround system. But the LEA has more say in what happens with the district. The House version just creates with the commissioner and the LEA a transfer plan for the schools that are in the ASD district. So it'll probably combine both parts of those. But the House district also has a portal called the Tennessee Education Achievement Portal Act, which creates a portal with things like professional development, grant funding, best practices that teachers could access to take advantage of. But that is not in the Senate version, so we're waiting to see if that will become part of the Senate version as well. So those were just a quick highlight of where we are.
A quick question regarding the charter school right of first refusal. Have you, based on the current draft of the bill, have you provided data to the superintendent on which of our facilities would be impacted?
I would need to talk to facilities about that.
I guess the question, Madam Superintendent, have you been provided anything like that? Okay, so as we track these bills in real time, I think our best narrative to combat the bill is not to wait till it passes. And I know you're doing the work, right? But just anything we can give elected officials the real impact of the bill? Because I, as an elected official, when I talk to my representatives, I don't know what to tell them. I can say I don't like the bill, but I really don't know the impact on us as a district. And so any information you can arm us with there would be helpful as well.
Some of the impacts that we've been talking about with our delegation are, the fiscal note doesn't seem correct because it, the bill provides that any major capital projects would be taken on by the funding body of the LEA. So, which sounds big, but if you have a school that's being kind of divided, and you've got a charter school moving into half of it, and so you have to create an entrance for the charter school kids so they're not going in in the same entrance as the LEA kid, you know? So stuff like that. We've been talking about fiscal notes a lot. I know there's a list now of the buildings that would be impacted, but a lot of it, you have to remember, the key is that we put it on a list as available. And so until we see that as part of all of the changes that we're doing here, there's, you know, it can change rapidly.
Yeah. And then the last comment I'll make to you all, particularly with the session lasting approximately 90 days, while I think this information is important for board members to know, I'm curious to know, like, what's your engagement on a weekly basis with lobbyists to, for you to stay informed? And as you prepare to answer that question, I also want to know, like, what happens when you hear of an issue that doesn't feel like something we ought to, that we need to have a position on, but, you know, the board's not meeting for another month, and the third, which means a third of the session is over? How do you, what's your, what's your go-to market strategy on that?
Maria, of course, talks daily with our lobbyists. We have a weekly call, a weekly update with all of our lobbyists and the other school board districts to kind of tell us where we are. Chief Horton's on there, Legal's on there, we're all on there. And then that is the question. Your other question is kind of a really good question. I've been trying to figure out a way to kind of replicate what I did at the city when those issues came up, because of course, we've got a different, we've got a different model here. And so I'm thinking about, you know, putting that together for next session and trying out some things. And I know, you know, it's two days too late, but we're just, you know, I'm just trying to put all that together so that we do have a clear, because we want y'all to have input on issues that we feel like y'all need to have input on.
Okay, thanks for that. I appreciate it. I think it has to happen, right? I think we're not a monolithic body, but at the same time, like, we start the year off with, you know, ethos around what we believe in.
Right.
And anything that erodes that, you know, student population or has a negative impact on teachers and students, we're not for it. And so I think start with that position, right? Until told by five other people that take a different position. So I think it is challenging when something new or nuanced come up and you can't get in front of the board. But I just want you to, you know, continue to be proactive in that approach. So I appreciate all you guys are doing.
And one problem realistically this year was that there were more caption bills than I've seen in several sessions. And so we were halfway through the session, sometimes even last week, before we found out what the caption bill was really trying to do. And y'all all know how that works. And so it's just a matter of making sure we're communicating with y'all in a way that is helpful.
I asked a question. I know, oh, sorry.
Superintendent Fagan, have we come up with a policy or some guidelines around the concealed handguns? If this becomes law, how will it affect us or who will be allowed to carry on school grounds?
I mean, generally, being a school campus, there are already laws that guide that. And so we'd have to wait on the bill itself once it's passed to just understand what the official language is going to be and what that particular process entails. And so she generally mentioned, you know, there are three parties, entities that have to approve for any of this to take place. I think you can know and know that we're all in alignment, that I don't plan to approve any of that. And so, but any policy that needs to be updated or reviewed in any regard, we're going to be prepared to review that. But we already have overarching laws and policies that guide what can take place and be on our campuses, in our classrooms. And so as this moves forward, which we anticipate that it will, we'll take a look at the official final language.
I think it's important for board members to say out loud, too, if you all have differing views. I know a lot of this is happening to us. We're waiting on final legislation around concealed carry, but I want to say out loud in public that we should not arm our teachers and this, that guns do not make us safer. And I think the risk of an accident happening on campus versus protecting our students is far greater. And we just invested $50 million to help secure our buildings, to keep things out of our buildings. It is just concerning. And then I think one of the other things that I'm looking, like, that happens all the time is we have all of these guardrails in place and then they go away. So I think taking a stance as board members, all of you all have your own opinions, but this is just not something that makes me comfortable or I welcome into Memphis Shelby County Schools.
Teachers should be armed with books, not guns.
Agreed.
That's our update.
Thank you, guys.
Let's call Audit, Budget, and Finance Committee meeting to order. We're only 14 minutes behind, and so I know you'll catch us up. Let's start with 2.01 with quarter three financials and roll right into 2.02, Budget Update.
All right. All right. Thank you, board commissioners. Really quick financial update. As of, this is our quarter three report as of March 31st, 2024. Overall, the district revenues increased year over year by 14.1% or $128.5 million. And the reasons are, we had about $4.5 million increase in local sources. That's because we are heading out the park with our investment income. We are up $142.3 million increase year over year for our state of Tennessee. TISA investment has increased as well. And then our revenues for our federal funds increased by 14.1% or $2 million, and this primarily related to our indirect costs. Looking at our year-to-date expenditures, they increased by 20.1% or $163.8 million year over year, net decrease that is. Our professional service decreased by 24.9%. That's primarily due to decreasing our outside legal fees. Our property maintenance services decreased by 43.6%, and that's primarily due to implementation of GAZB 8796 for reclassifying leases and software subscriptions. Contracted services increased by 64.1%, and that's due to deferred maintenance projects, custodied transportation, and our nursing contracts. Our supplies and materials increased by 66.6%, and that's because we had adoption of textbooks this year for our math adoption and software as well. Lastly, our charter schools increased because receiving more revenue in for TISA, we had to pass along more funds for charter schools. So next slide. Next slide is a look into our departmental budget, and we'll discuss our variances there. So our academic office increased by 15.4%. We did a combination of ESL bonuses because obviously their population increased this year, so we wanted to be intentional about getting teachers in ESL classes. Our chief communications budget increased slightly because we did some additional marketing and advertising and rental of equipment this year. Our general counsel department increased by 40.6% that's due to a rising cost of insurance. Lastly, our student technology department decreased by 20.7% that's due to a final payment that we have for a three-year subscription for endpoint software for our one-on-one devices. Next slide. So next slide is a look into our capital projects. We have three active county appropriations with an overall budget of $71.6 million. Through the month of March, we've spent $17.1 million with an encumbrance of $30.4 million. There is $24 million in uncommitted funds, and these uncommitted funds are mainly due to the new, two new high schools. Next slide. In fiscal year 2022, we have two open projects. That includes a design for the new Fraser High School, and obviously, it's an ongoing project. And then Madam Superintendent mentioned that we will be finishing those designs this year. Let's go to the next slide. Next slide shows our 23 appropriations. There are four open projects in FY '23. All projects are forecasted to be completed by the end of this fiscal year of 2024. Next slide. Next slide is a look into fiscal year '24. We have two open projects. Obviously, those two projects are the Northeast Region High School as well as the new Fraser High School. Obviously, those projects will be ongoing as we continue to talk about funding for those high schools. Next slide. This is a look into our investment this year. Board members, you'll remember, you approved over $60 million for our deferred maintenance. This total budget is about $58.8 million for our deferred maintenance. There are 22 projects, which includes roof replacements, HVACs, and then other projects listed that need repairs as well. Wanted to mention that these projects are all inclusive of what was before phase one. The projects that Madam Superintendent brought tonight doesn't include any of these projects that are on the way here. Next slide. And our final slide gives us a look into ESSR 3.0. We have 26 open projects in ESSR 3.0. The budget is $38.5 million. We've spent $28 million with an encumbrance of $8.5 million. We have about $1.4 million in pending requisitions for ESSR 3.0, and these projects are expected to be complete by the end of fiscal year 2024. That concludes our quarter three financials for this month. I'll take any questions now.
Any questions? More members to speak up now?
Okay, let them off that easy. That's a lot of money being spent, guys.
No, Tito, I mean, we're speechless.
Chief, I'll ask a quick question.
Three questions in one.
I said, it'll be quick, yeah. I'm working on it, Madam Chair. When it comes to budget constraints by department, from a policy standpoint, do we have the proper controls in place to prevent departments from going over budget? Outside of just having a wonderful CFO and now a superintendent that's going to be laser focused on that, as of right now, are there constraints from a policy standpoint that prevents departments from going over budget?
Great question. The answer is yes, and it's twofold. So looking at personnel, no personnel can be added to the budget or without the consent of a board through a budget amendment. And then non-personnel, the way the system works is nobody can go over a budget that was made unless there's a budget amendment. So we bring budget amendments quarterly for the board to approve, and their policy allows us to make any changes to, but from the budget, from the approval from the board.
I appreciate that. Superintendent, and I promise you, Stephanie, you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Love, you won't be able to follow up on this because this is a question you often ask, and I don't want you to ask it because you won't let them go. But I want to let them off the hook easily. But Superintendent, Ms. Love would often ask about staffing controls. Like, we want to be able to establish necessary controls from a, you know, from a headcount standpoint, where we'll see during the budget year, where we may see, you know, a department with 100 employees, and then, you know, with scope creep, three years later, it's gone up to 130 without rationale being given to the body. Perhaps during retreat, we talk through if we have the right controls in place and, you know, to make sure that we're not, you know, when you come in and hear the challenges that you all have articulated, and you start to right-size, right? You start to address that. As a body, we need to make sure that we do the proper things through policy to make sure that someone doesn't inherit that five, 10 years down the road. And so we just want to make sure that we have the right controls in place there as well, from a human capital standpoint as well. Thank you.
Can you speak to the fact that there are about five budgets in here whose increase exceeds 60% next year, so I'm 100% doubting? What would the reason for that be?
Yes, sir. So as I mentioned before, the way I do finances is the way we get audited. So I look at it as a view of a year-over-year lens. So while I may, if you look at one, I say 60%, it may only equate to about $1.2 million because we're, we have a $2.1 billion budget as a whole. So while I don't want you to be afraid when I say 60% because it doesn't necessarily mean a large summation of numbers, and every percentage that I gave you of an increase or a decrease, I gave you an explanation for that increase or that decrease as well. So I don't want you to be afraid when I say 60% increase or decrease because, again, that's just the way we have to explain anything over 10% variance to the auditors when we get audited every year.
Under the superintendent's budget, there's going to be a 51%, 52% increase?
Well, for that percentage, you have to think about that. We are, our new superintendent started April. We had a former superintendent that exited as well. So you're looking into a kind of a two-year look when you think about forecasting what the superintendent office will pay.
So why would the deputy superintendent's office increase by 66%?
Well, again, that, again, that is, again, a year-over-year look into what happens. So I got it specifically. So I got it specifically here. It's, it's actually a decrease in the deputy superintendent. And the reason is, the reason a deep, it's a 66.5% decrease, and the reason is because we've done less professional development and consulting in deputy superintendent budget as opposed to last year.
All right, what's your question, Ms. Garcia?
And if I missed it when I stepped out, I apologize. I have heard in the news about projections of lower wheel tax. Are we concerned about that for revenue and the impact on our overall budget?
The answer is no. When you say lower, so there's twofold. So we get wheel tax for, the wheel tax currently now, and this should be a legislative item somewhere, the current wheel tax is for purposes of, well, it started for purposes of education only. If you remember this current year, they wavered between doing a $50 increase and a $25 increase. And the primary reason was to fund us for two new high schools as well as regional one. So what that, what has happened since then is what they're saying is that the $25 million wasn't enough to fund all three projects. That's where you may be going to standard this list. So again, as the superintendent mentioned, she's met with, she started meeting with Mayor Harris to discuss what it looks like for us. For us, again, we know what the numbers cost for the new high schools, so we'll be advocating for whatever that looks like and whatever the county has to do to fund it.
They have to meet maintenance of effort, right? That's a requirement. There's no other questions or comments for this committee?
I have a question.
I recognize your light.
Tito and the superintendent, you can give the board members a cheat sheet. We talk to our representatives, I do, daily and weekly.
Yes, we'll make that just.
So we will all be on the same page.
Absolutely. We'll have it to you by Friday.
Thank you all. That concludes this committee report. Are there any other items on the agenda, Madam Chair?
No, thank you.
All right, that concludes us for the day. Thank you.